Good evening. I'd like to call to order a regular council meeting in the city of Satellite Beach, May 15, 2013, approximately 7:00 P.M. Please join Councilwoman Gott for a moment of silence and the pledge.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and thank you for coming. A couple adjustments to the agenda. Item number seven and item number 15 are postponed to a later date. Moving on, citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Hearing none, bring it back. City council comments. Start, Cheryl.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Mark?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Donnelly?
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Right.
Give it a shot.
Thank you. You can do it.
I'll make up something if you want.
The graduation is Saturday.
I'm gonna be there, yes.
All set up. Number five, city attorney's report.
Since I don't see anything for appointments on the agenda, the follow-up to the question at the last meeting, whether or not the fact that the code provides the potential for reimbursement of the expenses, as that may or may not affect the appointment of Ms. Montanaro to the Code Enforcement Board. I did some research, and then when I started putting the opinion together, made inquiry of the city as to how the those expenditures or potential expenditures for or the allocation of funds, I guess would be a better way to do it, for reimbursement of those expenditures would be made, and was advised that the city does not in fact have a budget for those items at all. So, from a practical standpoint, the issue is moot, and I don't see that that would be an issue. Obviously, if it comes to pass that the city does start budgeting for those types of expenses, then, you know, I can potentially provide an opinion at that point, but unless council wants me to provide one now, I don't really see a need to do that at this point.
Your council?
But I'll leave it up to council, how they want to deal with that.
You're fine. Thank you.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you. City manager's report.
I just wanted to highlight that we do have the two easement vacation resolutions that were on your agendas. We've just withdrawn that for now, and we're still trying to work through how to deal with those particular ones, as well as the future, and how we address those requests. We have received the salary survey again. We're sending it back again, so when we get those final drafts again, we'll provide that to you. I wanted to put together a highlight of that, the results of the salary survey, at your budget workshop, and I'd like to do that maybe at the end of the meeting. We need to talk about rescheduling the LOS and budget workshop and have an idea of how to get that done with last meeting. The other item is, I did want to thank the volunteers for helping out in City Hall, particularly Barbara Montanaro. We have a large public records request that we had to fill, and she came in for days and helped us do that, and we really appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number eight, discuss take action on acquisition of pontoon boat.
As y'all are may or may not be aware, the city's pontoon boat that was donated to the city in 1995 as a result of Mr. McWilliams' mitigation project has had a series of issues over the last couple of years with regard to leaking pontoon boats and engine problems. About a year ago, we started looking at the possibility of if the boat could limp along for a bit, we could put a new engine on it and possibly hold out until we submitted a fine grant to see if the fine grant would be awarded. The boat didn't make it. It is DOA down at Anchorage. Pontoons are leaking, and they cannot be fixed yet another time. We've kind of fixed three or four times now. So our gamble of putting a new engine on an old boat and hoping it would last until the fine grant got awarded did not pan out. I did locate a used boat up at Top Notch Marine, which is the marina just north of Pinida at the launch ramp there. It's a 1994 boat, which appears to be dumb. Why would you buy an older boat than you have? But it has a brand-new deck on it, which was also one of our sincere problems with the boat we had. The decking was rotten and support braces were deteriorated. This is a new deck, new braces. The pontoons look to be in really good shape. They do not accept used boats as trade-in without the leak test, the pontoons passing the leak test, which it did. So there are no leaks in the pontoons. The deck is brand-new. The engine would be taken off of that, and so Top Notch can sell us that used boat for $3,610 with no motor. The beauty of it is, there's nothing on it. It's got a little something. It's got a small seat in the back and a seat for the steering, the captain, and that's it, which is exactly what we need on Sampson's Island. We don't need a boat with TV and surround sound and everything else that new boats come with. We just need a deck. It's our work boat. We do use the plastic chairs to move our visitors back and forth, and when there's no visitors and there's lots of other things like mulch or garbage, plastic chairs come off, and we just use it as a kind of a barge. The Top Notch can dump this boat, dump is not right, can launch this boat at the Pinida Marina, Pinida Launch Ramp. Anchorage Marina, who we've done a lot of our work with, with pontoon boats in the past, has said for $500, they can come up to the Pinida Launch Ramp, tow it back to their shop. They will rig the motor off of the old, our boat, onto the new boat that we would hopefully purchase, and get rid of our boat, which is a big deal to us because we don't have a trailer. So in order for us to get rid of our boat, we have to rent or somehow secure a trailer and then move it somewhere and then do something with it. If the boat is going to be ready to go, we would want to put bottom paint on it, and that's an additional $720. So if we were to buy the boat without the engine, put our engine on it, get rid of our old boat, and put bottom paint on it, the total cost was $4,830. The fine grant, the presentation of the fine grant is in June. You do not know if your awarded funds until October, so you can't, it's not retroactive, so you can't purchase a vote now and hope to get it paid later. Even after, even if we got awarded the grant, there's, first of all, no guarantee we'll be awarded it, but if we are awarded it, since the vote that we would want would be a special order, because, again, we don't want TV and surround sound and all that kind of stuff, we still may not be looking at a boat until the end of the year, or first of 2014. We have not had a boat in service solidly since August of 2012, so going into a year of no boats. Mr. Baker's been kind enough to take us out there. The last time Dory and I went out there, we took off 26 bags of trash and recycled materials, full bags, used his boat, and took us three or four trips just to get everything off of there. Brian Gilcher, she used his personal boat, and we also jump on the police boat, the marine patrol boat, on Mondays when they go out, if they go out, we jump on that. So that's what we've been doing. We haven't taken visitors out to the island, really, since open house. The boat worked for open house weekend and died the next weekend. So I've been gambling. I'm not going to Vegas, I can tell you that. I'm not on a streak here.
Thank you. Excuse me just one second. Is there a buzz back in the audience?
Mm-hmm.
Do you hear it through the system?
I don't hear it here.
Yeah, I can hear.
It's not doing. Maybe you? Did that stop it?
Yeah, I don't hear it now. Is that clear?
Yeah, you start it again.
Steve, you hear it back there? Okay. It just, it kept fading on. I just want to make sure. That's fine. I think we got it. Thank you. Council comments?
I have a question. Carrie, Top Notch quoted a price to paint the bottom at $1158, and you're presenting $720. Are you comfortable with that $720 number for painting the bottom?
$720 is Anchorage price, and they just quoted us, Top Notch quoted us a higher price per square or per linear foot than Anchorage did. So I'm comfortable with that. I did have some individuals suggest that we just do our own bottom painting. Don't mind trying that. I've done a lot of weird stuff. But we would have to either rent space at Anchorage to keep the boat out of the water, get a trailer, rent a trailer, bring it over to Public Works, and then we, I don't know how to bottom paint, so we'd have to see if it's hazardous material or whatever. It's not impossible. I just don't know how much money we save once we start getting storage space, renting a trailer, and putting Public Works on that for a while. But I could find out if that was...
Just, I would ask this question. The money is in the capital assets fund?
Only comment that I have is, first of all, John, thank you for hauling all the trash. Appreciate that. I know Carrie and Sampson's Island group has been working this issue for a long time. I mean, they have really, literally tried every aspect to make this work, so it's kind of down to, they're out of opportunities here. This is probably the best we can get at this time. So that's all I have.
I just, John, again, thank you very much for all your efforts to help us out there. I know you've been going out there for years with all the stuff that you've done with the trees, and now you're hauling trash, so. But, you know, I look at this as, you know, we've got to do something. You've been, you know, in a situation that the purpose of being able to go out there with volunteers to work on the island is what the boat was primarily to be used for, and we've been without that service now for, you know, nine months. And I think, you know, if this works and we can get this boat and we can use it, if we get the fine boat, great, we can turn around and sell the pontoon boat. You know, I mean, we, it may, I don't know what the wash will be in the end, but, I mean, we get to use a boat for seven months, eight months, and I think that's what the objective is, is to be able to get people out there. When fall comes and it cools off, we're gonna want to be out there doing things on the island, and I think this provides for that.
Further comment?
Yeah, and the $500 price from Anchorage for the rigging is a pretty good price, because nothing goes easy when you take them off and put them on another boat, so.
It also includes them taking care of our storage fees for the last two months if the boat's been sitting down there.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's a more than fair price from what I know about rigging a boat and de-rigging and rigging and painting. Yeah, and I think that's just easy for us, so. Any further comment? I'll open it up to public comment if there's no anymore from council. Open this agenda item for public comment.
Hearing none. You make the council have a motion?
A move that we authorize the purchase of a 24-foot used pontoon boat, a 1994 Prestliner, for $4,830 to come from the capital assets fund, the price to include the cost of the boat, and the cost of rigging the engine, and disposing of the current boat, and painting the bottom.
Second. Go ahead. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Vice Mayor Bryna. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none. Go on.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries five, nothing. Carrie, thank you very much for the work.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. John, thanks for getting it back going.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number nine, discuss take action on request, utilize the oleander room for the Satellite High School robotics program. Who's the lead on this? Carrie?
Trevor Lowing had approached the city manager and recreation department about a year ago, I believe, looking for some city space to host a venue for Satellite High School robotics team. The catch was, he needed a space that was just for the robotics team. Robotics apparently has lots of materials that need to be stored safely so they don't walk. They also have build projects that don't come apart after you get them packed down. They don't come apart and start again. So what he was looking for at that time, we did not have available in the city. The civic center had not yet been fully renovated, so the oleander room was still not air-conditioned or maintained. Since he came back a couple of weeks ago and asked again if there was anything different, we took him over, Courtney and I took him over to the oleander room, and I said, "I don't know. It's a little small," and I opened the door, and he goes, "This is marvelous." I go, "Okay, it's the oleander room." But apparently, the oleander room is quite acceptable to serve the purpose of hosting the Satellite High School robotics team. The reason why this would be very, very cool for the city, first of all, it's a science thing, we're a science city, but second of all, it has the opportunity to meet several of our communities for a lifetime goals, which is to put intergenerational together. They have a Legos robot section for the elementary school kids that they would host and take care of. They have the high school kids doing the robots, and they have, this is the cool part, they have mentors, adult mentors from the community, either retired or working, who volunteer to help with the robotics team. So you've kind of got the, our science community who's retired, looking for something other than bingo, able to participate and feel part of our community and engage in the high school level. The only downside that I could see would, it would be full utilization of the oleander room by only one organization. We haven't yet started renting it. We do have a couple of activities in there this summer, summer camp things. We are going to do a big push to start renting, again, the oleander room and the auditorium now that they're all ready to go, but we had not done that yet. So after this, after the couple of things in the summer, there's no activity on the books for the oleander room. Only downside would be, they'd be the only one able to use it. There would be some loss to the city of potential revenue, and there'd be some expenses incurred to the city because of the electric that they would use, the utilities that they would use. My opinion is, it's a truly cool idea. It's something that really goes along with what we've always tried to do, staying engaged in the community and getting our elementary school kids, our high school kids, everybody out in the community, staying engaged even off-campus. How awesome is that? But it would just be a matter as to whether they want fees waived, as to whether the city's willing to pay the utilities and waive the fees.
I just wanted to add that, you know, when you have a public resource like that, you always struggle with that equitable issue, but I think here, we don't have a high use for this room, and I don't know if you've seen it, but, you know, it's just a room. And when they saw the room, literally their eyes lit up, and it was, it really fit their needs very well. I think if we tried it for a year to see if we did have any objections, then that would probably be a good course of action, and I think they understand that they have to, you know, they'll have to sign up their life away with the lease and all that, but I think, you know, after you talk to them, you get, you know, it's very infectious, their excitement for their program. After a while, you know, I started envisioning robots running around in front of the city hall, but I think it would be a good partnership with our youth and be able to solve a very big space need for them. We would recommend doing it for you.
Great, thank you. Council comments?
I wouldn't touch that robot line at City Hall. I do have one question. Their ideal space would meet the following criteria, the last of which was the ability to use a parking lot for practice. What kind of constraints will that put on our parking situation out here?
Mr. Lowing is here tonight. He can address some of that, but I did call and ask him that they would only need the, they would only utilize the parking lot when the parking lot was able to be utilized. They're not gonna block off the parking lot and then put the baseball kids somewhere else. Is that correct?
That's correct, and even the courtyard area in here is fine. Usually, the size of the arena is about the size of a basketball court, and that's about how much room you need to practice. And a lot of it's practicing, maneuvering the robot. Right now, in the last two years, even if we get the robot done, we haven't had much opportunity to practice navigating it around, because there's like a drive team that does that, because it's been on the second, second floor over at Satellite High, so it's hard to get to, hard to get in and out of a classroom when classes are going on.
How did you get involved with this program?
I've got three teenagers, two of them are going to Satellite right now, and my son voluntold me that I was gonna be mentoring the Satellite robotics team a couple of years ago.
It's always a good way.
Neat. Thank you.
Sounds like a good program.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Does this program run through the whole year, Trevor, or is this more or less gonna run from the school's timeframe? You might as well stay up.
You might as well stay here, Trevor.
Oh, all right. So the actual season pretty much follows the school year, but keep in mind that there are different skill sets involved, that you've got, you know, mechanically building the robot, and you've got the electronics for controlling the robot, and you've got programming, and that's been the weak spot, because you can't really teach kids to program in a narrow window of time, and doing it during the school year can be pretty tough.
So in other words, you're looking at utilizing it during the summer months?
We'd like to. Last year, we lucked out, and we got the Melbourne team to help us out, and one of their coaches volunteered to let us use his house, that we could have programming, you know, in his house, but, you know, imagine, the guy's got a family, and we're all trying to sit around a little table and, you know, teach programming to teenagers. So, I mean, that's it, is ideally to have a decent space to do that in.
I think it's a great use for the seafall scenario. The one question I have is, I mean, you know, when we look at Little League and other issues where we have adults and children in the same scenario, you know, are we gonna be looking at background checks for these people? Who's gonna pay for the background checks? You know, we have to consider these things, because whoever's gonna be over there mentoring children, you know, would we be liable if we didn't do background checks? I mean, these are, these are questions I think we need to answer and find out who's, is the school board gonna pay for, you know, the background checks for the people that are, the adults that are gonna be there interacting with?
We really, really haven't had to do that so far, but we also have been doing it inside of the school, and I can tell you, out of probably the seven or eight parents that have, you know, over time have mentored in the last two years, I'd say probably two-thirds of them have been through the school's, you know, system for doing that. But the idea is, we wanna, wanna gauge it and make it easier for people to participate, and, but we do have guidelines that we always have, you know, one of the, either the coach, Mr. Creninger, who might be here in a little bit, and he's probably still, you know, this is finals meeting.
I don't think I'm, you know, the people that you have involved now obviously have been doing this, but, I mean, if you're looking at bringing other people in from the community as part of the seafall thing, who are the people and what liability is the city gonna have if something happened?
I don't think the use of the oleander room, that particular use, would be a seafall activity. It just happily meets our seafall goals. I don't, I don't see his robotics team being any different than the women's club that meets over there, or the bridge that meets over there. They're renting, they're renting space from us, and in this case, they'd be renting at no charge, but they sign all the leases and responsibilities. Whatever Satellite High School requires of his robotics team, he needs to do no matter where he goes. Right, Trevor?
So in other words, if we have people from our community who want to mentor children in this robotics program, and they're coming in there, and there's an incident that happens with a pedophile or something, are we covered for that? Is there a liability to the city because we're allowing that to happen? I mean, you know, if you look at the people that are interacting in Little League, most of these people have to have background checks, am I right?
No.
Not all of them?
Never.
Okay.
But I can answer part of your question. Part of it depends on how you structure, what the relationship's going to be.
Well, that's the only concern I have.
I mean, if it's, if it's gonna be more like a partnership for seafall or something like that, then that may open that issue up, but if all we're doing is renting the space, then that's a different issue entirely, because that's all we're doing, is we're, we have no control over, I mean, when you rent something to somebody, you're essentially giving up control of that space for whatever the function is.
That's what we were saying, lease, we would like a lease arrangement, and if it's a dollar, then, you know, that type of arrangement.
That's fine with me.
Trevor, if that was a...
You know the people you're gonna be bringing in.
That was a deal breaker, you would say. Then all of our people would have background checks, correct?
Oh, right. Yes, exactly. And, you know, like I said, it's about two-thirds have already done through the school system for doing that, but we would like to engage the community more. If you look at really a prototype of what we want to do, it's a lot of what they do over in Melbourne. They've got a pretty good pool of retirees that come in, and they're the backbone of it.
Well, you know, I mean, if there were people from the community that wanted to come in and do this, I mean, what does a background check cost, Jeff? I mean, is it something that, if I was gonna volunteer, and they said to me, "I need a background check," and I was willing to pay for it, I mean, yeah, I mean, you'd probably have people that would be willing to pay 35 bucks to at least give you that peace of mind. So, I, you know, I'm, I think this is a great opportunity for the kids. I think it's an excellent, excellent opportunity for the city, and it sounds like we have all the bases covered liability-wise.
I would make it a lease arrangement, and if Mr. Lowing feels that he needs background checks for the people that go in, then he can make that decision.
Okay. Mark?
Only question. I think it's a great idea. I support it completely. The only question I have, Carrie, as far as electrical requirements go, I mean, if a lot of stuff's plugged in over there, can the building handle whatever they need to draw off that?
Trevor and I talked about that, and I said, "What you see is what you get, so if it doesn't work, it's not something that the city's gonna come back and make any adjustments to that, you know, have any kind of cost associated with them."
Okay.
I'm not sure how you would handle that, but...
It's not a heavy draw. During a contest, they run off 12 old batteries, so they're not, you know, really heavy power usage. Some of the tools that they use might, you know, draw a little bit, but nothing that you wouldn't use in your house.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
New territory, huh?
No, no, don't go anywhere. You have any questions?
No, I think it'll be a great partnership.
I have a couple of questions. I think it's great. Good job. Thank you very much. Question on this with the age bracket, I saw you had five- to eight-year-old.
Right.
Now, let me ask you this, because is this Satellite High School, or is this Satellite High School sponsoring it? And if we have kids in our recreation program who would be interested in, whether it's joining your club or whatever, you would mentor five-year-olds like they sign up for anything. We could have a kid who's interested to sign up, six-years-old, a first grader who's Lego, wanted to get involved in it, you would take him?
Right. A couple of years, or, I guess, probably a year and a half now, when we first talked about it, I sort of approached the folks doing the Lego robotics portion of it, but then we kind of got rejected, so I didn't want to go back to them again and say, "Hey, you know, let's, we finally got some resources and a location, you know, let's, let's try to do this better." But yes, any ages welcome, and I would really love to see that, is to have the older kids mentoring the younger kids, because one of the problems we have now is that a lot of kids do Lego robotics when they're in, you know, in elementary and middle school, but then they get to high school, and it's almost by accident that they find out that we have a robotics, because, you know, the high school's big, and, you know, the chances that they stumble across it and it meets with their schedule, but we'd like to be able to bridge that, have them, you know, starting from little, you know, seeing what the bigger kids are doing, because honestly, when you see these robots the high school doing, these are real robots. They have real control systems, you have to program it from scratch. You can usually, you can literally design it any way you want. I mean, it's complete freedom. You know, Lego robotics for the younger kids, it's a lot more constrained, you know, limited what they can do with it, so when they see that, you know, it'll, it'll help encourage them to want to participate all the way through.
I'd just like to see other kids in the community have the ability, since the room is gonna be, you know, given to you, I'd like to just see as many kids as you guys could mentor and keep programming going.
Same here. I mean, honestly, you know, I'd like to teach programming classes and stuff like that there, you know, it would be great, great for kids, you know, no matter where they're, what grade they're in, the things they can learn.
Trevor, this is kind of an off-the-wall question. Do you need Legos?
Do I need Legos?
Where do you get the Legos from?
Yeah, not really.
Are they donated? No.
I'll be honest, I, we'd have to talk to the Lego. I don't think Lego robotics uses Legos all that much. It's just that Lego have sort of put the kit together and the mindstorms, the electronics. They were the first company to go out there and say, you know, they're, they're very much about teaching kids. They put together a program to let kids, you know, program a tiny robot. It's not so much as like, building like Legos.
Building the, okay.
But, thanks.
Any other questions for Trevor? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Just so that you know the interest, Mr. Science, our science guy for the summer, all 11 of his camps are full, so that's 330 kids in. But we had to add a RoboWars. We have 60 kids in our robo camp, our robotics camp this summer.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll open up for public comment on this agenda item. Joe?
Ferguson, 135 Maple. Great opportunity. Two points. Number one, the Scotty flag card is in that room, and I hadn't thought to ask beforehand. Can that stay in there?
Yeah, we looked at that. We will work around that somehow.
Okay.
We looked at that, and we addressed that, and we'll figure that out.
Okay, I just forgot to ask that before. And the other thing is, apparently, there's already robot camps in the rec program with Mr. Science. Sounds like if these folks are interested, maybe Trevor wants to get Kerry and come up with another program that she could stick to.
You can do it all year round in the school year. They don't meet much in the summer, and you can do it in the summer.
Yeah, that's, you know, but this could go almost anywhere you want to.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
Couple of months ago, we had a resolution by the city council, presented to the city council on fees for rec use. At the bottom of that was instructions on who can approve the use and who can waive fees. That's the city manager. So, I'm wondering why this is here to begin with, why it's here in front of the city council when by statute or code, it's the purview strictly of the city manager. The second issue I have is, once again, we're... And I'm not against the program. I hope everyone understands that. I think it's neat. I think it's cool. I think it's wonderful. Will support it any way I can. But at the same point in time, we are allowing... We are waiving the fee because it's cool. It's a neat idea. The content is neat. We are waiving fees on content. And that's something that I brought up before, was going to get an answer, and still haven't, but it's a problem when we say something's cool and we like it, and we're going to waive a fee, as opposed to saying, "We don't like this. We're not going to waive a fee." And that's my concerns.
Thank you. Any further public comments? Here are none. Bring it back to council. Jim, any comment on that?
That's potentially an issue, but, you know, the part of... I mean, I didn't know how this thing was going to play out, number one, but, you know, part of it is, is if it's going to be in conjunction with Seafall, which, you know, that may make it more of a thing where the city's involved in it. So, I mean, the city has the authority to manage its own property in a manner it sees fit, subject to, in essence, what Mr. Headley was talking about. But if the city's an active participant in it, then that becomes more of the city being involved in it, and they're deciding what to do with their own property for their own But, you know, it depends on how council wants to go with it. As far as waiving the fees, you know, the city can... This isn't per se a fee waiver. You're actually talking about entering into a lease for the property, as opposed to just somebody using it for some particular purpose. So, that has a different connotation to it. And how... And then again, I just... I needed to see how council wanted to have this play out too before I could expound on an opinion regarding that. But I think it can be worked out no matter what... Whatever direction council wants to go with.
If I could add, I think the provision and the ordinance to waive fees is for one-time use, and this was a, you know, to provide a facility of the city for basically a year and at no charge. And I didn't think that I really wanted to absorb that authority to do that. I thought it was more appropriate for council to do that. And then the second item would be, you know, that's why we brought it to council, is because it was federal. There was no real set policy on how we would deal with it. And if we have a lease agreement at no charge, I think, you know, that pretty much solves the issue of providing something that's inequitable.
You know, I look at this from, you know, from the aspect of Seafall. You know, we have a large majority of intelligent people that live in this community that could be beneficial to this program, and I think, you know, you're willing to accept these people in. And this is the intergenerational thing that we're talking about with Seafall, which is part of what the city is looking at. And while I understand your concern, Steve, and I understand we're doing something that's setting a precedent, I think this is part of the city Seafall program, which is to bring generations together to do constructive things for the city. And I think there's a wealth of people here that might be interested in working with your kids there and doing these things. So, I think the city is involved. So, if we do this for a year, and we try it for a year, and it works out, you know, you're going to have access to that building. If it works, great. We can look at it and move forward with it. If there's kinks that need to be worked out, we can address those. But, you know, I think the city is taking a position here where we are being involved.
This is a very much underutilized resource, too. I mean, just letting you know, the Oleander Room isn't used very often, and so we're putting, you know, a facility that we have that's underused to use, and a very good use, I think.
Jim?
The other reason I didn't really bring anything up about this before is, I mean, an analogy to this is the teen zone. So, you know, I was looking at it in the context... I didn't know where exactly you were going, but when they were talking about the Seafall involvement, that was kind of the same thing with the teen zone, was the city was providing... Was affirmatively assisting and providing a place for teens to go, and I saw this as somewhat analogous anyway. So, I figure we can have at least similar to the one we have with the teen zone.
Thank you. Mark?
The comment I had is that, as far as moving forward, Mr. Mayor, I think we've got consensus that this is something we want to do. Do we need to direct Mr. Beadle to come up with the agreement to move forward with this in conjunction with Courtney and come back to us with what needs to be spelled out, Jim? So, is that what... Before we would...
Or do we just give direction? Have a motion and then directions?
Yeah, it's up there to a lease agreement.
I think you'd ultimately have to approve the agreement, but as far as right now, I need to give a direction on how you have to go forward.
I think we've got direction and consensus, and we could do that and then come back.
Yeah, I agree.
Consensus with that, Ron? Is that what you need, Jim? Okay.
Now, you're done. June 19th would be when it comes back, so is that okay with you? Okay.
That work? Thank you.
Is there something that can be done to allow them to start sooner? I hate to keep putting people off. You know, I think we are unanimous in what we want to do. We're looking at finishing up the paperwork, basically. And I don't know what the time schedule is for the robotics teams, but I don't know. Is that long a delay acceptable?
Let me ask you this.
Okay.
Just one thing. Is this something that needs to come back here, or could we give direction to the city manager from a council vote to have that city manager enter into that agreement?
Courtney just asked me that exact same question. I mean, historically, you know, when the city enters into contracts for things like real estate issues, it's always come back to council. I feel a lot more comfortable with that happening.
Okay. Sorry, I just... Okay. Trevor, is that setting you back or anything? Is that okay?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. We have consensus? Yes, sir? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Trevor. Thanks. Okay, moving on to agenda item number 10. Discuss take action on request to purchase the fire department thermo... Thermal, excuse me, imaging camera.
Hi, yes, Jim. Hi, how are you? Agenda item number 10 is for a request for replacing a thermal imaging camera for the fire department. Just a little bit of background, thermal imaging cameras or thermal imaging is a very ambiguous task within the fire service. The technology enables us to locate hidden fires. We have used it in water rescue scenarios and et cetera. And as I made an analogy to the city manager, thermal imaging to a company officer is like a heart monitor is to a paramedic. It is a needed piece of apparatus for us. The original camera we had was purchased in 1999, and of course, you think about technology in 1999, it was basically like walking around with a big 13-inch black-and-white TV with you. In 2005, we received a grant, and we bought a second one with 95% grant dollars. Last year, the one that was purchased in 2005, it broke. The internal core went bad in it, and because of the budgetary aspects and everything, we said, "Well, we'll go ahead, and we have our backup camera in 1999, and we'll continue to use that until we can get through a formal process for replacement." Well, unfortunately, that one is no longer working, and it can't be repaired because of age. So, between the two, one, because of age, you can't repair. The other one is that the 2005 one, to repair it, the cost is going to be greater than $3,000. You start getting to the point here is the cost versus benefit appropriate here. So, we requested from three separate companies to give us bids, or I think with quotes, for thermal imaging. You have two of them. Only two responded back to us. One company was Hallmark Fire Apparatus, and their response to us was for a thermal imaging camera and a charger. This is a demo unit for $7,654, along with a five-year extended warranty on it for additional $999, giving us around the number of $8653 for that item. It is a demo item, but it has full manufacturer warranty plus the five-year warranty. Second company that responded was NAFCO, and for their imaging camera, it was $7,500. They only offered a one-year warranty for $1,000, and its total cost was $8,500. And the third company did not reply back. Some of our recommendations are Hallmark Apparatus for the no greater than $8,700 recommendation for, based off of overall value.
Thank you. Courtney, where would the funds come from for this?
This would be the capital assets again.
Again.
I have a question. With a one-point... Approximately $1.5 million budget for the fire department, there's... You couldn't do this... There's... You couldn't find $8,000 within that budget for equipment. And just curious, I mean, you obviously knew this life expectancy was coming to an end. Why was it not budgeted to begin with?
Well, the simple answer to that is that items greater than, I believe, $2250 are specifically to be paid for out of the capital asset fund, is the way it's historically been. So, it's not a matter of not planning for it. As a matter of fact, I did plan for it, and unfortunately, kind of like Kerry with the vote, you know, the hoping that we can get through just didn't occur.
And the operating budgets are very slim right now, so there's not a lot of room.
Any other council comments on this before I open up the public?
I'm looking at the capital assets and the budget thing here. There's $4,000 in the fire department's capital asset. I mean, is that coming? Yeah, well, that's what it says. It says fire... It says computers and software. So, this is additional money that we're going to be putting in that's coming out of capital assets. It's unencumbered. How much... I mean, where are we in the capital asset fund?
We have a fund balance of around $400,000.
Okay. I think it's a good example that we really need to look at our capital assets throughout the city, because we're going to start getting nibbled away with, you know, things breaking and wearing out and just general wear and tear on.
And things haven't been replaced over the last few... I mean, we haven't paved roads. There's a lot of things we haven't done that we used to... Even though we didn't have a capital assets program, we had a mechanism that we had in place that replaced police vehicles, fire vehicles, you know, paved roads, and we need to go back and look at all of that stuff. So, I just wanted to kind of get an idea where we were. Yeah.
Council comments, Mark?
Just a question, Chief. Regarding joint use, would this be something that could be shared or in or used with the police department in any capacity?
I... The answer to that question would be yes.
Okay. Second question would be, as far as... You talk about the three bullet points that we've got here. Tell me the public safety or personnel safety aspect of this. How does... How is that enhanced as a result of having this?
The actual genesis of thermal imaging designed for is for victim location and instructor fires. That's the genesis behind it. As the technology progressed, not only do we use it for that, which thankfully has been zero occurrence for us per se, is that it helps us to locate hidden fires behind walls, things that we can't visually see, especially in low visibility atmosphere, and other uses what we've used for, and we have specifically utilized this for water rescue at night. Because, have you seen maybe some of the cameras that you get from helicopters and stuff? We've been able... We had a victim off of Hightower Beach, I believe it was, and it was in the middle of the night, and the helicopters were looking, but our guys had their thermal imaging, and they were able to pinpoint where that person was and facilitate a rescue.
Okay. The incident I'm thinking about, and you'll remember this one because we talked about this a long time ago, was the one, as you go down South Tropical Trail headed north, the house, the big two-story house that caught on fire. And that was one of those things where you guys found out that the fire was actually in the wall and got the occupants out.
That's the hidden fire piece that is going... That you're referencing there is that, you know, the way structures are built today, we have a lot of what we call concealed spaces, and fire can get behind that, and you have nowhere powerful visible signs of it. So, the ideal behind thermal imaging is that it helps you locate where the city...
And I think that, when the lightning had traveled down inside the walls and lit up everything inside the walls, but you couldn't see it. So, this would enable you to see that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And just one thing on the... I don't have the budget in front of me, but I know the capital asset fund was a huge topic of discussion, and if I remember correctly, that fund was kind of depleted and distributed through the budget to different departments with only a reserve of about $4,000 left in it. So, it's something we probably need to sit down and talk about, because I'm pretty sure it had been picked at pretty good, and there was... If we stay on budget, there's not going to be anything left in it.
Further comments from council? Here are none. Open up for public comments on agenda item number 10. Here are none. Bring it back to council.
Move to authorize the purchase of thermal imaging camera not to exceed $8,700 to come from the capital asset fund.
Second. Got a motion by councilman... We got a second by councilman in Montanaro. Any further discussion on council? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Dana?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bryan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dog?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passed, aside, nothing. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 11. Discuss take action on an amendment to the interlocal agreement with Brevard County to include joint staffing of a ladder truck. Chief?
Yes. Some time ago, as you remember, we had looked at some various types of joint purchasing and joint staffing agreements with Brevard County. Approximately around December of last year, Brevard County's fire chief approached us and said, "Look, we went ahead and we purchased a ladder truck for the Barrier Island for their use." And the fire chief approached me and said that their analysis of location stations, that Satellite Beach Fire Department would be an ideal location for them for placement of that apparatus. Brevard County's already purchased the apparatus. Brevard County's already purchased the apparatus. I believe the cost is slightly over $900,000 and they're expected to take delivery here within the next couple of weeks within service, being the vehicle be available in service probably midsummer. The request from Brevard County Fire Rescue tells this, is that one, it's amending our current interlocal agreement for automatic aid that is already in place with Brevard County. Second thing about this agreement is that there is no request nor will there be a request of any type from Brevard County for payment for the truck. They have fully paid for the truck. It is, that expenditure is done. The joint service piece for this is that the apparatus will be stationed here in our department and that we will supplement the staffing for that apparatus. They will provide two firefighters per shift. One of them will be the driver. The other person will be the officer, which is the supervisor of that vehicle. And then we will provide two firefighters to be part of that. And of our firefighters that we provide for, they will be paramedics, so that will serve as our second advanced life support unit. The agreement, as we lay forth and we talk about call volume and how often would this vehicle be out of the city. Currently, in our, in our local agreement that we have for automatic aid, we currently respond to fire-related calls from Cocoa Beach all the way down to Sebastian Inland. In the last roughly six months from January 1, and an analysis of the number of calls that we have already run in that area, it has been less than 50 calls. So, when we go back and then I played it back, I don't anticipate greater than 100 calls a year would our, our units be responding. There is no change in the way that we do business because we're currently going through those calls already. So, as far as service delivery, there's not a change. And some may say, "Well, does that mean 100 times a year that we don't have firefighters in the city?" Well, yes, that does happen. However, our system, the fire EMS system here in Brevard County, we have built in, we call move-up assignments, which means is that when we're going down to Melbourne Beach to assist Brevard County, Brevard County is, is moving their engines around to start filling holes here. And so, if Station 62 hasn't been dispatched, they're moved to a central location typically around DRS in that particular area. Or if both have responded, they very well may be bringing over the fire engine from Suntree that moves over. So, we have never had a true gap in coverage. And as a matter of fact, for the 100 calls that we go to, this is anecdotal, but I will say that eight times out of 10 were canceled well before we get there and our actual turnaround time on that call was probably a total of 25 minutes. The arrangement for this is this, is that, you know, what's the skin in the game for Satellite Beach, is that we are proposing that there will be a prorated cost share for vehicle maintenance. The vehicle maintenance is service to the vehicle, fuel for the vehicle and things of that nature. It'll be prorated based off of call volume. They runs 200 calls, 100 calls are Satellite Beach calls, 100 are there and it's a 50/50 split. And a report that Brevard County's fire chief presented as a business case study, he estimated his cost to be $5,000 a year. And so, I, we, because we don't have a history of what the cost would be, that's what we've put in. I actually believe that that cost will be less than that for one reason is that it's a brand-new apparatus under warranty, so I don't know how many years of warranty they have on it, but I really doubt that there will be much to this for, at least for the first five years, more than oil and fuel and tires. And I don't see much cost of that. And because that it will be our secondary unit, I believe, and I won't say this 100%, but I do believe that our second engines, when we do our services, they're based off of hours and mileage because I, my second unit's not responding, that I'm actually going to be able to decrease the amount that I spend. So, this very well may work out to be budgetarily almost a wash. I won't say 100%, but it may work out to be that. The staffing arrangements for Brevard County's personnel in our building, first of all, joint staffing and co-station habitation is not new in Brevard County. Cocoa Beach does it, Cape Canaveral does it, the city of Rockledge does it, the city of Palm Bay does it. So, these processes have already worked through and really it boils right down to, they're guests in our building and so when you're a guest in our building, they live by the house rules. Our house rules are department policies and procedures. As far as supervision goes, our station officer, our captain will always be the supervisor inside that station on all matters. If there's a matter of conflict that pops up, which big boys and big girls shouldn't be having these problems, but if a problem pops up and can't be resolved, then, then obviously then both administrations have to be involved in it. But I really do not see that happening. The, Brevard County has agreed to assist and assistance is either monetary or in-kind for station maintenance, including preventative maintenance for the common use area, and that would be the sleeping areas, the office areas that they would use, kitchen and things of that nature. I have to tell you, at the end of the day, though, you know, when I say, you know, this is free, you know, free is never really free, but I have to go back and I look at this and I look at the broader picture of what we've been trying to achieve as a fire department, as a city for fire protection. 15 years ago, we identified a 100-foot platform ladder truck is a, is a desired and even needed asset for our community. ISO, Insurance Service Organization for our Fire Insurance Premium Ratings, has identified and said, "This is a, this is an apparatus you need." And I believe that we will probably, and I won't say this until they come here because you never know, but our reevaluation, I believe that we're going to see an ISO drop from Class 3 to a Class 4. That, I'm Class 2, I'm sorry, down to Class 2, which is the second lowest rating. And I don't think there's 800 fire departments in the country that are rated as ISO Class 2. The benefits will be lower insurance rates specifically for multifamily and commercial and potentially for residential. I believe this is a win-win. As your fire chief, I truly, honestly believe that at the end of the day, the customer will see absolutely no change in the quality services that they receive now. And as a matter of fact, I believe that in, and when we look at it from a fire response standpoint, I believe that there'll be increased service.
Thank you very much. Counsel, comments? Who would like to start?
I do have a comment, a question, and I asked this before when the ladder truck came before us, is there adequate stall space for the ladder truck?
Yes.
And then we also did the ISO hokey pokey last year. Our ISO rating probably will not go down because we do have a ladder truck in our municipality. So, I just wanted to put that out there. There's plenty of documentation from, regarding that, and I wanted to make sure everyone is aware of that.
I'm really delighted to see the opportunity to get a 100-foot ladder truck. Our residents who live on the upper floors of our high-rise condos do not have the fire protection that they're paying for. And I can tell you that I believe it was on two occasions that we applied for grants for these 100-foot ladder trucks. And those firefighter grants are extremely competitive and very hard to be awarded and we were not successful. So, this is, I think, a wonderful opportunity to take care of a, of a big hole that exists in fire protection for all of our residents, so I'm glad to see this.
Thank you.
I just know how hard chiefs work on this and the chief before you worked very hard on this. This has been a project you guys have been working on for a long, great time. So, I think the proposal that you have in front of us is a good one, chief, I really do.
Thank you.
I think it's also good. I have to agree with councilman Dodd on the people who live in the condos and so forth. Everybody deserves their service provided to them. And I know for years that has been a big issue, that we need to protect everyone. And I think this is as economical as we're going to get. The additional funding comes from $5,000 or whatever.
I was going to take it from the police department if I could.
That's fine.
Oh, oh, you're here. Sorry. This will be an allocation for next year's fiscal year, 13, 14 budget, if you will. I do not see a budgetary impact for this fiscal year.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up for public comment on this agenda item.
John Ferguson, 135 Maple. I don't think there's any need for the public to hammer that this is a good idea. I've got a feeling it's going to pass. But for the record, this department has been working for years trying to do this. And the best deal we've had so far was maybe $350,000, $400,000. So, $5,000 a year is excruciatingly affordable. I also would like to say that I think if I had a choice between what the chief believes the ISO will do and somebody else, I'd probably go with the chief. Thank you.
I'll be happy to send you that documentation, Courtney.
Thank you. Public comments? Any further public comments concerning this agenda item? Here and none, bring it back to council. So, council? I'll make a motion to approve amendment to the interlocal agreement with Brevard County to include joint staffing of a ladder truck. Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Bryan, or second by councilman Montanaro. Any other council member would like to make any other comment, I'll take them at this time.
Yes, I will send you that ISO information that came directly from the ISO tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Here and none, any further discussion from council? Here and none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Deedon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bryan?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes, five, nothing. At this time, with council approval, I'd like to move to agenda item number 17. Discussion, take action on request for grant authorization for enhanced community policing focus on school safety. Chief?
Good evening. Thank you. Recently, we were made aware of a grant opportunity that came available for a police officer position. Before I get into the details, the position has, or the, the funding has not been approved by legislature yet. So, it's potential, it's possible that we go through all this and submit an application and it doesn't get funded, so there's nothing there. There's a lot of steps to go through before this would even be considered for approval. However, it would just be irresponsible to be two positions down with the desire and the need to replace those two positions that were lost over the past year and a half and not look at a possibility of grant money that would give us $125,000. In effect, would be 25 cents on the dollar for the first two years and then slowly increase and then, of course, year four would be full payment. The information that you have is very similar to several grants that have been done by the police department in the past. I suspect that maybe all of you have seen these, seen this in the past. I think we've submitted this particular grant three times and actually in the 90s, I believe, we were awarded one. And that person is still here and again, it worked out great because it was a position that was needed and it came with, you know, I hate to use the word free money, but it just seems to be the term that's used. So, I am just requesting permission to just submit the application. That being said, that's just it. It's submitting an application. If it's funded by the government, if the government goes through the process and our application and they see that, that it's viable and they fund it, then we have the opportunity to sit down at the time that this is funded, which would be months down the road, and, and choose whether we want to accept it or not. However, I think, like I said, it would, it would have been irresponsible if we just let this grant go by and not at least make an attempt and bring this to you to, in effort to save the city money, to provide a service that we feel is necessary.
Thank you. Comments from council? Councilman Dodd?
I understand you're wanting to take a shot at this and then decide later, but I will tell you, my experience in over many years of grant writing is that grantors are not crazy about entities that are awarded and then turn it down. They really expect the applicants to feel certain that they will take the money and proceed with the project. Obviously, unforeseen things occur which, which cause awardees to turn down a grant, but that really, I would really hate to see Satellite Beach acquire the reputation of playing that game. I don't think it's good policy. Do you know what the funding cycle on this is? How far out would we even be looking at getting money if it's awarded?
The award would have come in no later than September 30th of this year.
Of this year?
But we, we might not know if we're awarded it is, I don't think it's any earlier than August, but it would probably be mid to late August before we're even notified. And then prior to September 30th, the, the funds will be made available.
You know, I've noticed just in looking at the budget information, you're already up in overtime. You know, we are short of police officers right now and if this is a mechanism, and I know we've used this because this has come before us when, when I was on council in the past, you know, ultimately out four years, it's, he's our guy and we're paying him, whatever. But you know, four years from now, you know, God willing, the economy will be better and we'll have the resources to cover the cost of it. But I think this is an excellent opportunity for us to bring in police officers or a police officer and, you know, and utilize this grant. So, I'm in favor of moving forward with submitting it.
I have another question.
Let me just go down and I'll come back.
Okay.
I actually don't have any issue with submitting the grant, but with the option that you presented as, as a staff recommendation to fund or decline the grant funds because we just went through a not-so-great audit where it says, you know, increase revenues, decrease expenditures and, and watch what we're borrowing. So, I think it might be premature to, to, you know, dedicate these funds until we get through the budget process.
Yeah, I agree. And I, and that's exactly the intent, but I looked at it and said, I, I would rather submit it, find out that things aren't working out later and have an option than to not and find out things are better and now we've, that, that opportunity and that money is gone.
And we can withdraw before the award, too.
We can.
We can withdraw the application before the award. And then the other item is, you can actually let this position go in the fourth year and the only penalty from this granting agency is that you can't apply the next year. So, given that laxity in terms of penalties, us declining the funds, I think, especially in this economy, probably won't be all that weird to them. So, in my opinion, you know, this coming budget year, staffing and public safety really wasn't going to be presented as a priority for, for me. But if we did have the opportunity and we were able to cover the funds, to be able to get a position with this grant fund, if we were able to do it, I'd hate to go back and say, "You know what, I wish we would have applied to that grant."
Thanks.
You know, so that, that's where I think we, we should at least just go ahead and apply and if we get through the budget and we say, "You know what, $17,000 for this is probably a good idea this year," then we can always withdraw it.
The position you'd be hired with the entry level, so this would be a, a brand-new officer, never worked before, is that right?
Yes, sir. Well, the, I don't know what their qualification will be coming in, but they, the entry level pay.
Entry level pay, okay. So, you don't have, you don't have to hire a new grad, so to speak. You can hire.
No, right out of the academy is, would be fine.
Okay. And usually with the, with the hiring right out of the academy, there's additional expenses on training, all that sort of thing. So, that, that would not be an issue as far as the budget goes and that sort of thing?
No, we have a training program in place.
Yeah, and then I think, you know, all the departments have a problem with their budgets and operating training and that, we'll talk about that during the workshops, but, I mean, that, that's unrelated to this position, though.
Okay. Yes.
Chief, right now, given nothing changed today, how many positions that were budgeted for this year are you down?
Two.
Okay. So, say that you don't replace a person this year or don't replace both positions. That means there's a position still open that is funded and that particular grant, if we took it, would fund a portion of one that we already have in our budget, correct?
Yeah, but I'd be really uncomfortable waiting that long.
Yeah, I'm just asking the question from a, a budget standpoint.
Just from an operations standpoint, not only are we down from the level of service standard that we had in the past, but now we're also down two funded positions. So, from, from that perspective, I mean, you can comment on that, but that's.
No, I, just, I mean, the honest answer to the question right this minute as we speak, we're down two, but we're in the process of trying to get, of getting those back from the budgeted, because they're budgeted, they're there, they're unexpected leaves. So, we're, so we're technically down four people right now, but hopefully it won't be too long, we'll just be down to two.
You know, me, I try to hold off on hiring, we already had this discussion.
I just want to make sure. Thank you very much. Further questions? Councilman Dodd, you have another?
Make a motion?
Let me open it up for public comment first. Public comment on agenda item number 17.
Do you have at least a little resume? I have no issue whatsoever with the hiring of, or applying for the grant as this, as this is being presented. Back on August the 8th, there was a budgetary workshop in this very chamber in which was somewhat contentious, to say the least. Chief Pearson presented at the time that we were down two positions due to Chief Cody leaving and a detective leaving. So, the position that we are short at that point in time, even though we appear to have lost two other people, were not boots on the street per se. They were more, I mean, we can say the detective is a boot on the street, but it's not a patrolling officer. As Mr. Montanaro has noted, this can be a federal honey pot with us, with Satellite Beach being Winnie the Pooh. We have to worry about getting caught in something with not funding down the road. At the time, and this is going to make Ms. Deedon very happy, I think, at the time on the 8th, one of the things that Chief Pearson presented was that with a revision of the human resources policies, there was actually enough money in there to fund another officer. And that's something that, once again, kicking the human resources thing down the road is actually hurting us. So, while I'm not, I'm not, I, I think this is a prudent way of handling it in the sense of making sure, hopefully in the next six months or so, that we can have a human resources policy in place that, that would allow us to continue to fund this particular officer when the funding runs out, the grant money runs out, as well as making sure that we're not stuck with someone, and I don't mean that literally, you know, that down the road we can't afford. He, Chief Pearson said on, on the 8th, and because I went back and watched it today, that getting rid of an officer is very difficult. First in, first out, all sorts of, of transition things. And, and I just think that we have to be careful reaching into the government hunting pot and being stuck there like Winnie the Pooh.
Thank you. Any further comments, public comments on this agenda item? Here and none, bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the Satellite Beach Police Department to submit a cops hiring program grant application to hire one entry-level police officer for at least four years. at least four years with a total project cost of three hundred eleven thousand nineteen dollars plus sixty-five hundred for equipment, and a total city match of a hundred and eighty-six thousand nineteen dollars plus sixty-five hundred dollars for equipment.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilwoman Montanaro. Further discussion?
So, we're authorizing not the grant application, and then if we're awarding the grant, we're authorizing, we're not authorizing accepting the grant, you're authorizing applying for it. Oh, that's fine.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just gonna make sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further comments from council? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Berman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lenore?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttina?
Yes. Motion passes five, nothing. Item number eighteen, discuss, take action on resolution nine thirty-two. Jim?
Resolution number nine thirty-one, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, authorizing the lease purchase of certain property through execution of a master equipment lease purchase agreement with clinical public finance, Inc., making and agreeing to the covenants and agreements in connection therewith, authorizing city manager and appropriate city officials to execute lease purchase agreement and ancillary documents, providing an effective date. It's a reading of resolution number nine thirty-one.
Thank you. Counsel comments?
Yeah, on the second whereas, what is that date that's left blank?
It says New World Systems, Inc., blank.
If the resolution passes, I presume that we will put in there the following Monday. If we can get the mayor to sign it.
Sign it.
I believe this is when they approved it, the date that they approved the idea. That's what I...
Is that what you're...
Yes.
Okay.
That would be the last meeting.
That would be today's committee.
That was the last meeting. You guys approved the acquisition of the property.
Yeah, that would be the date. So, what, that was the last meeting, so that was me first?
And the date on the back would be the date that it's accepted.
I apologize, we should have put that in.
And so, put dated May one, twenty thirteen.
How do you agree it's not dated, the council approved it?
Right. So, it's basically the resolution saying, you're going to enter into this lease agreement, and we want to make sure council approved you doing that.
Requirement from the leasing company.
You know, usually they accept minutes, but they wanted this resolution.
So, this is from the leasing company.
Why does there need to be a date there? Take that out, because it's just confusing. And then also, in section two at the bottom, in the third line, you've got the verb is singular, it should be are, you've got a plural subject. So, it's are hereby approved, third line from section two.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution nine thirty-one with the changes.
To approve it.
To approve it.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Montanaro, a second by Vice Mayor Brymer. Any further discussion from council? Open it up for citizens' comments on resolution nine thirty-one. Hearing none, back to council. Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gutt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Berman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttina?
Yes. Motion passes. We'll go back to, and I have it as agenda item number twelve. Correct? Okay. Discussion, take action on mid-year budget review.
I, if you wouldn't mind, we could take twelve and thirteen at the same time. The presentation I have is kind of interrelated, and we just want to go through it real fast with this by five and fifteen.
Okay. We'll take twelve and thirteen. Let me just, excuse me. Ordinance number ten seventy will be taken as thirteen, correct? Jim, you want to read that?
Ordinance number ten seventy, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the FY twenty twelve, twenty thirteen budget ordinance number ten sixty-one, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance number ten seventy.
Thank you. Courtney?
Okay. I just wanted to give a brief presentation. I know some of the numbers can be hard to decipher and sift through, so we're just going to highlight some of the major items. This is just to, you know, remind me of what my duties are to you, and basically to prepare and update you on the budget. Oh, okay, yes. I thought I was using this. Basically, where we're at right now is, at mid-year, the general fund revenues, we are estimating to be off-track by about ninety-five thousand dollars in negative. And basically, this is coming from, unfortunately, until last year, we never adjusted for general fund revenue. So, we only have really one year track record to compare ourselves to, but at last year, what we did was, we took the, where we were at in terms of the original budget and then the amended budget, and made sure that we adjusted to the same percentage of last year's. Last year, we did have a decrease in tax revenue, which is why we had some impact to the reserves at the end of the year. We have some decreases in terms of business tax receipts, however, all the rest of the general fund revenues seem to be on track. So, it's really the ad valorem that we're adjusting for. And this is just kind of where we're at in terms of the adopted budget versus where we are now. These are the revenues split up in just kind of a graphic form of what we've already talked about, but basically, some of the revenues that we get, the collections are at different periods of time. So, we had to make sure that we were looking at the snapshot of not only current, right now, but also at, you know, the third quarter and at the end of the year. So, we were able to figure out that we're pretty much on track for everything but ad valorem. In terms of expenditures, at the six months, end of March thirty-first, fifty percent of the budget has lapsed, and based on the expenditures by fund, all the departments are within their budgetary appropriate, so we're not overspending in terms of expenditures by department. And this is by function. In terms of budget, unbudgeted expenses, this is where we have to make adjustments for things that we do throughout the year and don't have a budget for or didn't account for. A lot of times, we would do this at the end of the year, and if we had some overages, we would take it out of the reserves. And this year, we don't have that option. So, that's why we're being very careful this year in adjusting for revenues at mid-year, and then also trying to adjust for our expenses at the remainder of the year. When we want to do something that's not budgeted, we will have to identify exactly where we're going to take that fund from and do a budget amendment at that time. Just because we're, I'm a little nervous about getting to the end of the year and not having the money to cover our expenses. So, we had some changes with the consultant for the city manager search, the wage study, some beach access repairs with Public Works, and then some computers for the administration. We had some computer issues that were unbudgeted.
Question real quick, on the beach access repairs, if they're in the CRA, do we get reimbursed from that?
No, because these were repairs.
Okay. Thank you.
These are what we are expecting so far after March thirty-first, that we will be accounting for at the end of the year. And what I've tried to do is identify the funding sources for those expenses, and we're backing them out in our minds. So, I would, wanting you to back it out in your minds, so when we get to the end of the year, we're not scrambling and trying to figure out where we're going to take this money from, okay? So, part of that is, we had a administration, or a change in administration with the reorganization, and then we also had the two items that were on your agenda that you just approved. So, those are the unbudgeted expenses so far, and you see the funding sources there. So, we have identified those funding sources, and we'll be keeping track of that for the rest of the year. Okay? So, basically, you know, the mid-year review isn't that exciting, except that we just have to adjust for, you know, some decreases in revenues and some unbudgeted expenses. But I just wanted to make sure that, we may be wrong in decreasing our revenues for ad valorem by ninety-five thousand, I hope we are, but we just want to be careful because we really don't have a lot of planning room in terms of reserves. So, that's what we're recommending, is to do this at mid-year and minimize the impacts of general fund balance.
All right, how do you see it?
She's used to Excel, not PowerPoint, by the way. Major equipment and other capital needs are recommended to be funded by the capital assets fund balance. And I understood your concern at the last agenda item, Councilwoman Dean, but basically, when you're looking at how we're divvying out the capital assets fund per department, we're divvying out those revenues for that year. But there is a fund balance, and that shows in our audit report, of around four hundred thousand dollars, okay? And we also don't want to, right now, since we don't have any other reserves, want to keep that intact for a while, because in case we have some major issue, like an air conditioning unit goes out or something like that, then we need to have some revenue to be able to use up. And then, again, all departments have been working within their total budget appropriations, especially the fire department. They're very good at their budgets. I like to highlight that. So, and that's pretty much it. It's very simple. The ordinance that you see in front of you has a lot of adjustments. Those are line item adjustments that we know are going to come down the... They are, in my opinion, this type of presentation is difficult to understand. I think as we move forward in the next couple of years, we'll try to refine this and maybe make some pretty big changes to try to make it easier for you to understand and the community. I know, I have a lot of experience with budgets, and I have a hard time, you know, getting, it took me a while to get the grasp of what was actually occurring. And we're already talking about, if we have to do this again at mid-year, what better way to report it to you so you understand it better, too. But it is, in my opinion, a little difficult to understand. But the ordinance does make a lot of minor adjustments. The biggest adjustment is the ad valorem decrease in revenue, and then also on the expense side, you know, some of the unbudgeted expenses. We make up for a lot of that within other budgeted items. Part, one of those budgeted items was a budgeted line item for additions to reserves, and that's being increased.
Thank you very much. Counsel comments? Who would like to, anybody like to card? Hearing none, open it up for citizens' comments. Citizens' comments on these two agenda items. Here and none, back to council. Counsel comments?
I would like to get a copy of that PowerPoint presentation.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number ten seventy on first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Brymer, second by Councilwoman Gott. Adopt ordinance number ten seventy on first reading. Any further council discussions?
I just want to thank you, Courtney, and I know Christine has been putting in some long hours to present this, and I really appreciate it because we didn't have this last year to keep track of what was being spent.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any further discussion, council? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gutt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Berman?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttina?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number fourteen, discuss, take action on ordinance number ten sixty-nine. Jim?
Ordinance number ten sixty-nine, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the city, amending the Satellite Beach Personnel Policy, Section Two, definition of terms, establishing an appointed employee, amending section twelve-point-zero-one, job classification levels, to add job classification, assistant city manager slash director of support services, and salary range, to eliminate job classification of finance director, to add job classification for HR benefits coordinator and salary range, amending sections seventeen and eighteen for consistency, providing an effective date. It's the second reading of ordinance number ten sixty-nine.
Thank you. Counsel comments on...
Move to adopt ordinance ten sixty-nine on second reading.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, a second by Vice Mayor Brymer. Counsel discussion.
I just want to make sure that during the compensation analysis, we're going to address all of these pay grades and these positions, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further counsel discussion? Hearing none, open it up, public comment on agenda item number fourteen.
I raised my objection to this at the last meeting, and I believe in some aspect it was a little misunderstood. I have a good friend who works not only as a labor lawyer, but for someone who makes policy in the government. And by government, I mean federal government. And at the cost of a pizza, I asked him to look at this, and here's the example he came up with that's the issue. City Manager Jones gets injured on the job and is out of work for six weeks or six months, the time doesn't matter. The succession would be for the assistant city manager to step up, but they do not assume the title of either acting interim or any type of official city manager. At that point in time, that individual is not accountable to anyone in this city. They're not accountable to the assistant, or to the city manager, because if they are on disability, they cannot perform work, and even a decision to fire or terminate them is considered work, and they would lose the disability for that point in time. This should be addressed through a human resources policy and not creating a new position and a new area that's going to cause more issues down the road. And that's the biggest problem. I don't have a problem with him being appointed, but I would be, prefer, or I think it's more prudent, that we have a policy that addresses where, what happens in succession, and also to have a policy that sits there and says, who's responsible for the conduct if the assistant, or the city manager is not available. And not only that, it just, we are setting ourselves up to, for failure here in the sense of having an employee that is only accountable to one person without recourse through a human resources policy if they get into a shouting argument, for lack of a better term. It's not good policy to do this. It should, there are better ways of handling this. And this is not about the current city manager. This is about looking down the road. As Mayor Cuttina said, we turn over city managers on the average seven to eight years, five to eight years. We need to address this differently.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Why would you think this position would not become an acting city manager if I was to be incapacitated?
Steve, come back to it so we can record. Thank you.
Because the position of acting city manager precludes the fact that there's a city manager that's no longer employed as such. If on disability, you're still employed as the city city manager.
And I don't want to get in a debate, but just to answer that, the, anytime I leave town or anything like that for an extended period of time, I would designate an acting city manager in my absence. So, in this case, it would be no different. And most assistant city managers act in that capacity when I would leave town, so, or be incapacitated or anything like that. And in that case, that position would be accountable to council at the time. And acting city manager is actually part of the job description of this position.
I understand that. I can only tell you this, that according to my guide, there are five cases working through the courts right now where that's the issue. That's the exact issue. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Thank you very much. Any further comment from the public on agenda item number fourteen? Hearing none, back to council. Any further discussion?
I would just like to ask, I mean, if, God forbid, something happened and you got run down, and you weren't able to designate someone as the acting city manager, is the assistant city manager, do we have a policy, or is there something that basically says, you're now the acting city manager? And I think that's what... And I think that's what Steve is bringing up, is, is there something that says somewhere, this is the succession scenario? And if there isn't, maybe all we need to do is create something in writing that says, this is the scenario, and then that solves the problem.
The city council would, if she were not able to designate an acting city manager, then it would fall to the city council to designate that the assistant moved up to acting city manager, and at that point, that individual reports to the council and is responsible to the council. This is a non-issue.
And that's what basically happened before when we brought Jeff on to do that position, it's accountable to the council.
And I, just to let you know, I know of very few assistant city manager positions that aren't appointed positions by the city manager. I mean, it's just kind of typical.
But the fact that it's appointed by the city manager, does that give the council the direction to, in your absence and in your incapacitation, does it give the city council the ability to do that, because technically, that person reports to you?
Absolutely. I mean, technically, all the employees report to me.
Right.
You know, so, but in this case, if, the only reason why it's appointed is because it's a very high-level position, and that position needs to be able to work within the framework that I'm establishing as a manager. And so, that's the only reason why it's an appointed position. I don't think that precludes any other issue, so if the council wants to designate that position as the acting, if I can't do it, then that, the fact that it's appointed has nothing to do with that, in my opinion.
Any further council comments? Do we have a motion on the floor? Here and no further council comments, Lenore?
Councilwoman Medina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gotti?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes, five, nothing. Excuse me, number fifteen is not on the?
Sixteen is next.
Sixteen is next. Take action on interlocal agreement between the city and the CRA, providing reimbursement to general funds for CRA-related expenditures.
I have a couple of changes on page two, under Section Two C. It says, "Any costs incurred by the city on behalf of the CRA shall be reimbursed." Reimbursed should be changed to paid, because this is not a reimbursement arrangement, so reimbursed should be paid, and that sentence would continue on a dollar-for-dollar basis, and personnel costs, plural, strike reimbursements. Personnel costs shall include both salary and benefits.
Okay.
And that, then says what we're intending it to say.
Council comments? Any other council comments on this?
Just for clarification, on your presentation before, we are building beach access, we're developing the CRA district. If something needs to be repaired within that district that was created or built by CRA dollars, why doesn't CRA repair it?
If it was created with CRA dollars, you can use, you can maintain something with CRA dollars, yes, you can do that, as long as it was built with CRA dollars.
Okay, so the one, just for instance, on that particular presentation did was not something?
Those were just regular crossovers that were damaged by the?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Let me follow up with that. At what point does it become a CRA piece of property?
Well, the actual, what was built has to, is what can be maintained. So, if you, for example, have numerous light poles, and you put banners on the light poles with CRA dollars, and it's just the banners that you put on the poles, then the only thing you can replace and repair are those banners, you can't replace the pole. So, that's maybe the best way I can explain that. So, yeah, it's very, it can be dicey, but if you have a mix of project with CRA city funds or something like that, you really need to define which is being built by CRA, which is being built by city, and only repair what's built by the CRA.
And because it is within the CRA makes obviously no difference, it's where the dollars were spent to be built, okay?
It has to be an improvement, a redevelopment improvement, not an ongoing maintenance or expenditure.
So, let me ask this, we did the De Soto Parkway, the CRA did the plan there and made the improvements, but I don't think you replaced the steps down with CRA funds. I think those steps down were always there. All we did was the stuff from their back.
Yeah.
So, we, I mean, when does it get to the point where when those fail the next time, why can't the CRA fix them?
Because the city built them. It was existing before the CRA came in and made it better.
When the CRA came in and made that access, the access that it is today, the stairs didn't need to be addressed because they were in good shape, but because of the fact that we, we should have just replaced them with CRA funding, that's what you're saying.
Well, if you do a project on an existing piece of infrastructure, if you're, you can't replace those stairs as part of the project with CRA funds, it has to be an improvement. So, you have to enhance, you have to make a big addition to it.
Well, if we enhance, we should have enhanced them, is what you're saying. So, I think when we move forward, and any other kind of repairs, they need to be re-enhanced, because it's ridiculous that these are structures that are in the CRA, that if we need to enhance them, let's enhance them and use CRA money instead of general fund revenue, that's basically going to, you know, I mean, it benefits the whole city, but it's in the CRA.
A good, yeah, a good example is sometimes, a good example is like a street skate project. So, you can go in and do the street skate, but you can't resurface the road.
But I mean, we're looking at two different projects that we're looking, we've just taken bids on, have addressed the stairs on these projects, because if we haven't, we need to go back and look at them, because if we're not paying for the steps now, we're going to be paying them forever out of the general fund. So, I mean, we need to go back and look at those.
But that, that's your policy, your policy decision on whether you want to use your redevelopment funds to do that.
Wouldn't it be that we would, what I'm hearing is, we could do it with CRA, as long as it is a project that CRA votes on and enhances what you have there, then it can be done.
I mean, it just has to be, it has to meet the test of redevelopment.
Right, okay.
Lenore, you have to keep in mind, and we've been over this many times, that we're not sitting at the CRA right now, just because it's in the CRA doesn't mean it's a CRA project, and it really is, and Courtney and I have talked about this, can get, like you said, a little dicey, and you need to be very, very careful in what you're expending those CRA funds on.
And I understand what you're saying, but I look at it as, we're talking about spending a hundred and some odd thousand dollars behind sun on the beach, and if we're not addressing the stairs, we should be addressing the stairs, because that is a project.
Yeah.
And we need to be enhancing the stairs, so that if something happens and we have a storm, they can be put back as the enhanced ones that were there.
Now, you can sometimes make the argument that your project, even though it was existing, that if you improve it or expand it, do whatever, if it's facilitating redevelopment there, surrounding, or near, you know, maybe making access to properties that didn't have an access before, or something like that, then you can use it, use CRA funds for that purpose, but I'm, I would be a little concerned using CRA funds to replace something that we already have, and I'd have to give you that.
But I'm saying, if we enhance them and we make them better, handicapped accessible, however we want to do it, I mean?
Yeah, if you made a substantial change to it.
If we have a storm, the things that are going to get impacted are the crossovers.
We got it.
Got it.
Are there council comments on this agenda item? Here and none, back to council. No motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the interlocal agreement between the city and the CRA, providing reimbursement to the general fund for CRA-related expenditures.
And have, and have the mayor execute the agreement?
Yep. Yes, that's part of the motion, yes.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Brimer, second by Councilwoman Montanaro.
As amended.
I said that, too, yeah, we're good.
Any further comments?
Yeah, I do have a comment, because we talked about this last time, this will have to go to the CRA, correct?
Go to prove it to the CRA.
Did the CRA approve it? I thought we were going to run this by the CRA attorney, the new CRA attorney.
I was going to let the new CRA attorney review it, and if there was any major problems, we could bring it back, but I wanted it in place so we could present the CRA budget.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah.
Have any questions answered? Okay. Here and no more. Lenore?
Yes. Councilwoman Gotti?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes, five, nothing. Moving on to agenda item nineteen. Items for next regular council meeting?
We were going to put your comp plan amendments on here, on this, on this. But again, if you saw this, the proposed agenda in the previous, on the May first meeting for this meeting, and see how drastically different it is, so sometimes these change when things come up, so I just want to make sure that, you know, I don't think there's one single thing that was the same on the agenda.
And to me, that's not, shouldn't be an issue, I think it's, the only issue is that we, if we want something as council, or a department had meat something on, that we try to get that on the agenda, possible, if all the backup information is there.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to look at a calendar now at this agenda item to see from future meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
I have an idea. We, we need to have your budget workshops sometime in mid-June, and I know that it's a popular time for vacations and, you know, things like that, so to have two LOS workshops before that, and the budget workshop may be a little difficult to do, so we were thinking maybe we could combine that and drastically shorten the LOS presentations to really highlight just needs instead of what we do. It's really up to you, but we're kind of running out of time to get to mid-June to have three special meetings.
So, they would do what again? The LOS?
The LOS would highlight very quickly what we do, but not as elaborate, and then just highlight our needs, the departmental needs, and each department will present that in literally a twenty-minute stack, and then I think it would probably be about a thirty-minute presentation on my budget priorities to you, and then another, at least thirty minutes, for you all to give me the budget parameters that I should go through to prepare your proposed budget, and it would probably be about a three-hour workshop if we structured it that way and kept on task. So, maybe if we could start at maybe five-thirty or six, and have a little longer meeting in one meeting and not three.
Good. What's your preferred date, so you can prepare?
I think at this point, if we focus on mid-June, we would be really in your hands. Whatever date is best for you, we have some board meetings that we need to avoid, but you have Wednesday, the twelfth.
I'm good with that.
Would that work for everyone?
Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
Fine?
Mm-hmm.
Sounds great.
Okay, great. Did you want to start a little early, in case it became a little lengthy?
Mark, you're?
I can do five-thirty, that's about the earliest I can go.
Can you do five-thirty?
Yes.
Good. Okay, so five-thirty on the twelfth, so it'll be a combined LOS budget workshop.
Okay.
Lots of PowerPoint.
And that's going to start at five-thirty?
Yep.
Okay. That suit everyone?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, that we get all the information that we need. I know that in the recent past, the levels of service workshops went by the wayside, and they're very important, and so I just want to make sure we don't get cheated out of any of the information that we really need in order to make sound decisions.
I directed all the departments to present their levels of service needs to you with brutal honesty, so that's how we're doing it.
When will we get, will we have the ability to see that before the twelfth, so that we can?
Oh, sure, we'll provide an agenda to you, just like we did with the previous LOS, as you got copies of all the presentations, and you can review those, too, those are the full presentation.
Those are already there, we already got those, we can just look through those.
Okay. Okay. Any other meetings we need to set for, Jim, at this time that you're aware of?
I don't know.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number twenty, minutes.
Move to adopt the minutes of the May first workshop meeting and the May first regular meeting as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gotti, second by Vice Mayor Brimer, to approve the minutes of the first workshop and the first regular. Any further discussion? Here and none, Lenore?
Yes. Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gotti?
Yes.
Yes. Any further business for council? Here and none, thank you all, Stan. You may adjourn. Lenore, I'll stay and sign whatever I need.
Hi, Steve.